Having six o'clock on July 22nd, 2024, I will call the Board of Selectmen meeting to order. And as a reminder, the meeting will be -- this meeting is being broadcast and recorded. Maureen, if you'd like to join us at the podium, I'm going to take your item first out of order of the agenda.
Can Vanessa come up to me?
This isn't a public hearing, so you're welcome to join us at the podium. And when you speak, if you could keep it six to eight inches from the microphone so that we can hear you on the recording and participants online.
Okay. And could she come up?
Who is she?
Vanessa.
This is -- we're strictly having you speak with us. You're the applicant on the licenses.
She's a Woodman.
That's fine.
Okay.
No, she's not going to come up. You may speak at the podium.
Okay. And then if she wants to speak, can she come up to the podium?
No. This is not a public hearing. This is a meeting where we're giving you the courtesy to speak about the licenses.
Okay. What do you want me to say?
Sure.
Are you going to ask me the question?
We have three one-day licenses that were presented at the last meeting. One for use on Wednesday, August 7th, between the hours of 6:00 p.m. and 8:00 p.m., non-amplified guitar vocals at the Salt Marsh tent. Another for Wednesday, August 14th, the hours of 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., non-amplified vocals, guitar, and a harmonica under the Salt Marsh tent. And a third one for Wednesday, August 21st, 2024, between the hours of 6:00 and 8:00 p.m., non-amplified vocals, guitar, and harmonica at the Salt Marsh tent. So the board decided at that point to table those licenses to get more information. Previously, we had received applications from Woodmans for non-amplified events, and then the events became amplified. It was brought to our attention. So we said at the last meeting, if the events are going to be amplified, we would rather have applications that identify them as amplified and then approve them that way. Not request non-amplified and then change what's been approved. So we tabled them, knowing that we had time before the events, to approve them in whichever format was the accurate and truthful format. So you've responded in an email that there's no intention of amplifying them, that they are going to be acoustic only, and that you'd like an opportunity to speak this evening. So we have them before us, and you've identified that in an email. So at this point, the board, I will certainly ask for a motion, but because it falls within the guidelines of the policy, I see absolutely nothing that would prevent us from approving these as they sit here today and with clarification in your email that says they're not amplified. So, but you wanted to present.
So yeah, so we've had five so far. Two of them, they plugged in. Three of them, they did not. It's not our intention to plug in. I think right now I have two more in front of me who are already approved, and then these three. I'm not going to amplify them, so when I was told to try to come up to amplify them when I'm not going to, I don't see why I would ask for that. Also, it says in the rules that if I did apply for amplified, I have to go to the abutters and get permission from everybody. And I don't even -- well, it does say that in the policy.
If there's a hearing.
And I don't even know how many feet that is, because all the abutters at Woodmans are Woodmans. So we don't have any neighbors. But I don't know how many feet it is, because it doesn't say how many feet it is. So one, I'm not going to amplify. I have no intention of amplifying. I haven't amplified the last three. I'm not going to amplify Wednesday night, and I don't see why I would apply for something that I'm not going to use.
Right. But the two initial applications were also identified as non-amplified, and then they became amplified.
Right.
So we're just saying, if they're going to be amplified, just apply as amplified.
Yeah. And I'm telling you, they're not going to be.
So you can -- can you assure that?
I'm sorry?
How can you assure that they won't be amplified?
Because the last three weren't amplified, because I was there.
The two were.
The first two, but not the last three.
Okay. But so you're just going to -- you know, one solution we can have potentially is to approve the first one, see what happens at it. We have another meeting before the next ones, and then see what happens. Or, I mean, that's an option.
My feeling is, I trust that Maureen's standing before us this evening, saying that they're not going to be amplified. We had them on our agenda at the last meeting. We gave her an opportunity to apply for amplified, if that's what she wanted, knowing full well that the board has, for the last couple of seasons, successfully approved amplified events. And I think that was our point, is we've successfully approved amplified events that have not caused a problem. So since we've been approving them, we would rather just approve them in a truthful format than to approve something that's not what we're looking for. But we've received an email that said--
That's how I feel. I don't want to ask for something that I'm not going to do. But I would like to know that answer. How far away is the neighbor letter?
So the way that we determine abutters is through the assessors portal on the actual town website. You go in, you put in your address, the address that's being identified on the application, and you use the -- what's it called? Not layers, the -- for the abutters. You click on the abutters link, and you put in -- in the box, it will ask how many feet is the policy, 300 feet? Or is it 500?
I don't have it in front of me, but--
I don't have the policy in front of me.
I think I can clarify. If you're applying for an amplified event, you don't have to have abutters letters.
That's only for a hearing.
It says that they can be submitted if you want, but it doesn't say you have to have them.
Okay. So if I'm going to apply next time for an amplified, I'll write amplified, but I'm not applying for amplified. And this is the third -- this is the third meeting, not the second one. This is the third one, because these were tabled two meetings ago.
No.
No. These were tabled at the last meeting. So--
So yeah, so let's just take a vote. I'm ready. Let's go. I'm not going to amplify them.
Thank you, Mrs. Woodman. So at our last meeting, we tabled these. We have an email saying they're not going to be amplified. Mrs. Woodman's here to clarify they're not going to be amplified. I see no reason not to. I will entertain a motion to approve the three one-day entertainment licenses as listed on our agenda for Woodmans Lobster Pool.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor.
Aye.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'm going to -- oh, Mandy Serra, thank you so much. So we're going to take something out of order again.
So this item is the confirmatory deed.
Yes.
Many years ago, there was a tax title acquisition by the town, and then a subsequent sale of that property, there was a typographical error made with respect to some of the references. And the property is being sold, and so the attorney brought that to our attention. His research was reviewed by town council. Town council agrees that it was a typographical error, and given that, there's no town meeting vote or anything needed here. It's just to correct what should have been written properly when the original sale took place. And so I recommend that the board execute the confirmatory deed, and that can be notarized by Mandy, who's here tonight.
I will entertain a motion to approve the board executing the confirmatory deed with respect to the chain of title for Zero Southern Ave., Map 136, Lot 101, to correct a Scribner's error.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Do -- I'll pass it down the table, Mandy, after we all sign.
I'm going to put the date in.
You have one.
You need it in blue or no? Doesn't matter.
Do you want to take this one, so they're all the same? This -- well, we'll pass the panel along with the application, along with the--
So while that's--
Alvin, yeah, thank you. Sorry.
While that's being notarized, I'm going to recommend next that the board move into executive session to consider the value and possible sale of the estate of Allen Properties that have been transferred to town ownership via the tax title process. And I recommend that the chairman declare that an open discussion of this matter would be detrimental to the town's negotiating position, and that the board will be returning to regular session to continue with regular business.
I will entertain a motion to go into executive session by roll call vote, because we do have people attending online.
Peter Fippen, aye.
Elvin Gaharo, aye.
Ruth Purine, aye. I'm also going to stop for one quick second. For the people that are online, we're going to go to fade to black. You're not going to be able to hear us. We're going into executive session. We will be returning to the third floor stage and coming off fade to black to continue with our regular business meeting. But I do see two of our sergeants on the line with us, Sergeant Shamshack and Sergeant Bruce. I believe you're probably attending to talk about the chief's hiring process, and that did not make our agenda this evening. We didn't have anything else we were going to discuss. So we are pushing that to the next meeting, which will be in three weeks. So if you want to stay with us, we would love to have you. But if you would like to hang up and enjoy your evening, you do not need to continue with us. Thank you. Okay. So Joan, you can go to fade to black. We're going to be going down to Brendan's office. Thank you, Joan. 6:32, and we are back in regular session. Thank you for patiently waiting. Brendan, if you want to do the town administrator's report.
Yes. The first item has to do with something that we knew would be coming eventually. In fact, we knew back in 2000, when we signed the intermunicipal agreement with the city of Gloucester, that there was a chance that the state and federal governments would require that -- the wastewater treatment plant in Gloucester to come up to secondary treatment standards. Right now, it's the last remaining primary wastewater treatment plant of its size in the country. So the city, knowing that their recently amended consent order requires certain dates for performance of that upgrade, hosted a meeting last week.
We were just looking for the notarized.
Oh, I have it.
You have? Okay.
They hosted a meeting last week about what -- something you may have seen in the paper, that the city has authorized borrowing from the state revolving loan fund of $206 million. They have other -- some other funding that they're pledging towards this project as well. It has to be operational, the secondary treatment, by June 30th, 2028. And the town will not see a request for repayment from Gloucester until fiscal year 2027. And the town will be asked to repay its share annually, because the city's repaying the loan maker annually. We're not going to be asked for an upfront or a lump sum payment. At this point in time, if 20-year borrowing is selected, the city's annual debt service will be around $9 million, and the town will owe around -- somewhere in the neighborhood of high $200,000s to $300,000. It's possible that, in the beginning year or years, the town could use some of its interest surplus fund that has accumulated from people paying interest on sewer betterments as part of the Essex sewer project, could use that toward what we owe the city to perhaps ease into the repayment. At this point in time, the city is looking to finance, they say, all of the project by spreading it out over the city's tax base and not by putting any of it on the rate. In Essex, we've traditionally done around 30% of the project on the tax base, and of course, the other 70% would be on the rate. That's where that interest surplus fund comes in, because maybe there is a way to do it on the rate if there's enough of that other money blended in. We're also going to continue to join the city in supporting more federal funding and more money that could offset the loans that have to be taken out. Alva accompanied me to that meeting. I don't know if you have any questions at this point in time, but that's the basic rundown. Fortunately, you know, we've been told about it in plenty of time, that we're going to go through this new fiscal year that we just started, and we can go through all the way through fiscal '26 and have the -- a chance to plan for this. Importantly, all of our sewer loan -- all of our sewer debt that the town of Essex incurred as part of the project rolls off by the time we have to start paying the Gloucester -- what we owe to Gloucester. And that's important, because we can't touch that interest surplus fund until our debt is retired. So the timing is actually very good.
Brendan, I think I saw somewhere they're at 30% design.
Yes.
Does that mean that they've determined if they want magnolia and all this other stuff that they were talking about?
At this point in time, my understanding is that it's just to upgrade to secondary. Yeah, and they're not seeking to expand this system at all. In fact, Alva asked that question at the meeting. At one point in time, there was a question as to whether the city, as part of this process, wanted to take on other customers, including perhaps Manchester.
Yeah.
But at the time, when we had another meeting that Selectmen Fippen went through with me, the city pushed back, saying that it would only open up additional neighborhoods in the city and perhaps open up some areas to development, that they didn't really prefer to do that, as well as incur additional costs to the project. And so my understanding is that it's -- the $206 million is to simply get to the secondary treatment at the plant for the existing city customers, Rockport and Essex.
So the -- my only comment about this, I've been giving this a lot of thought since I read it and have been following this project. And I know that traditionally, we have put the good majority of the cost on the rate payer, the actual user of the sewer system. But you know, I've been giving that a lot of thought, and I know that that's been kind of the popular position. But in looking at things with the school, we have a lot of people that live in the community that don't have kids in the school, and their argument's always, well, I pay for the school and I don't have kids, whether they never had kids or the kids are graduated. And I guess I'm kind of feeling a little bit like that with this particular potential for borrowing, which is, why not spread it amongst the entire tax base and not just the sewer users? I understand it's a privilege that they have, but the school is a privilege that everybody has, and we all pay for it. So if you were to take, instead of doing it, you know, 30% by taxation or whatever that looks like, I feel like we're spreading it amongst all the taxpayers and making it a little bit more affordable for everybody, or not as affordable for some. It's a hard decision, but if you follow my logic on the school and the sewer, it's kind of the same idea.
Right.
Not everyone uses it, but everyone pays.
Of course, the higher you go into taxation, the less chance that it has to be able to -- the annual payment to fall under the levy limit. So if you go higher and higher, you're going to potentially have to have a debt exclusion vote of the town meeting and then ratification of that at an election, because if it's not going to fit within the levy limit, you have to go through the conventions of proposition two and a half.
Well, yeah, and--
But we have time to plan that.
Right.
You know, between you talking to the Board of Public Works and thinking about this, I mean, this is very preliminary.
Yeah. You know, the whole town was under a consent decree by DEP, and certain areas had to be seared and certain areas didn't need to, but the ones that were seared allowed those that weren't seared to be not seared. So you know, it makes sense that everybody needs to pay.
And at the meeting, the mayor made the point of saying, in Gloucester, one of his justifications for spraying it out amongst everyone is that people in Gloucester that have a septic system, when they pump those tanks, it goes to the Gloucester treatment plant.
Yeah, goes to the treatment plant, too.
So they're utilizing it anyway.
Yeah.
And so that was one.
Yeah.
So that's a possibility. This is just to get it all on the table, and any way that the policymakers decide ultimately to present it to voters is a fair game at this point.
Yeah.
Yeah. And my other concern, we were talking about the betterment that were, you know, those of us that are on sewer that are paying right now. I know myself kept thinking, oh, good, I can't wait, it's almost done.
Yeah, right.
And if they, you know, all of a sudden realize, oh, now it's even higher than it was before. I think that having it amongst everyone. The one question I did want to ask you, BC, is regarding, did you find it odd that Rockport wasn't at the meeting?
No, because--
It wasn't like we were changing contracts or anything, so that's why I was really confused.
I don't, because their contribution is so low, it's only a few homes, that it's inconsequential to them.
Oh, I didn't realize it's only a few homes.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
And I will--
How much -- how do you envision the betterment funds, whatever it's called here, that funding? How do you see that working? Like reducing the first year's payments by 20% or 5%? 50%?
Yeah, it can -- it definitely can be used for rate reduction.
Yeah.
And it really comes down to finding out exactly how much is in the fund, looking then at other things within the sewer system that you need to spend some of that money on, and then saying, okay, well, we have this much money. How can we make this work throughout the repayment program? And that's -- but we don't -- it's too early to tell.
Yeah. Okay.
Any other questions on that? The other item on my report is the -- a chance to look at the Essex causeway and how we're expecting, in the future, to see flooding events become more and more common, a way to perhaps have that studied by the Metropolitan Planning Organization. If you look at the town's hazard mitigation plan, which MAPC gave you a presentation on the current draft of the plan not long ago, the town then started to accept public comment, and by far, the most popular public comment was, the town really needs to start working with the state to understand what is going to happen with the causeway, especially in light of the fact that the Apple Street project is not moving forward. And so, and this was in a previous report, I had reached out to the DOT, because they're starting to look at all their coastal roadways, and they had mentioned a plan that they have now developed called the Beyond Mobility Plan. And they mentioned that they're going to have a consultant starting to look at some of the more difficult roadways, and ours is certainly one of them, because it's a regional roadway with difficult constraints on it. So between DOT maybe having their consultants start to look at it, and they said the consultant was going to start looking at roadways this fiscal year, and potentially the Boston Metropolitan Planning Organization getting interested in it, maybe there's a way to call more attention to it. I have a meeting this week with some people from what's called the Central Transportation Planning Staff, which is a subset of the MPO. That came from a connection we made after I had an interview with other people at the MPO. We, like many communities, had responded to a survey about coastal transportation resilience, and the follow-up interview they did to that survey was with me, and they said, well, how could we help you better? And I said, is there any way for MPO to help us study this? And so now they've said, yeah, we're going to at least talk to you about doing that.
Is that a Zoom in person?
It's a virtual meeting, if you have interest in it.
Yeah, I do. If you could send me the info on that. I have a bunch of things on Wednesday. That's Wednesday, right?
24th. Yeah, that's Wednesday.
Wednesday, yeah. But if I can attend, I'll try.
Okay. All right. I'll let you know. My hope is that, I mean, we're writing all this up in the final draft of the hazard mitigation plan, that that was the most popular comment. We're going to be saying in there things like, well, we've looked at the Beyond Mobility Plan, and we started to follow up with organizations such as the MPO. And maybe by the time the final draft comes out, we'll even know more about how this is going to be studied. So I think that's a good development, and that's what I had in my report.
Great. Thank you. I will entertain a motion to approve the weekly warrant, the amount of $995,666.16.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes for the Selectmen's July 8th, 2024, open meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I will entertain a motion to ratify the chairman's signature on a letter of support for the trustees' Phase III Great Marsh Restoration Project.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We do not have anybody here this evening to talk about the bocce ball and horseshoe court, so we will table that until the next meeting.
Yep.
I will entertain a motion to accept the letter of resignation from the town clerk, effective August 16th, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the process--
Yeah, let me give you an update on that. So at this point, the town clerk has told me that she actually has to leave one week earlier than that, because of what's happening in her life, in her personal situation. So she plans to be there, be here in person this week and all of next week. And then the third week, she plans to continue to help us remotely, can support the office. We're going to have the assistant in there, but she can help support the office. The important thing here is -- so that's going to take us through, let's see, August--
20-something, 20?
No, no, no. This is this week, next week.
Didn't your original say 18th?
So it's a week earlier. So instead, this is really going to be August 9th, just to let you know.
Okay. So we'll correct the motion to read August 9th.
And the big push right now is they're getting ready for the September primary, and right after that, the office is going to have to get ready for the presidential election in November. There are things happening all summer long. Our hope is to be able to at least get somebody here interim. We've put the ad out already, waiting for people to apply, that if we don't have a quick enough response, we're looking at possibilities. The current town clerk has reached out to a couple of town clerks from other communities who might be able to help temporarily. The -- we're just going to keep looking around for people that might be able to help us out while we're hopefully fielding candidates for a replacement. It will probably be -- the process will probably be just like the board did in the past, which is we'll get a few candidates. You'll probably have a daytime meeting sometime for interviews, and then hopefully extend an offer to someone and move forward.
Did anybody reach out to the runner-up at the last?
Not as yet, but I'm certainly willing to do that.
That was Holly.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll let her know that we have the position open again. I know that there is a town clerk hiring process going on in Wyndham. I've already reached out to the town administrator there to see if he'll get our notice to people who were not selected, and he's going to do that. So those are motivated people who are actively looking right now.
Sure. Yeah. Good.
Plus, we have it on the Town Clerks Association website, which got us a lot of good play last time, so, you know, that's where it is. Does anyone have any questions on that?
No.
Do we have a target, just ASAP?
ASAP.
Yeah, we've got the vote, the voting--
Elections.
-- coming up so quickly.
Do we have anything that wasn't anticipated?
I do -- I do not.
Okay. So I will entertain a motion to approve the senior commercial shellfish permit for Peter Ferriello.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And a reminder that the next regular Board of Selectmen's meeting will take place Monday, August 12th, 2024, at 6:00 p.m. here in the third floor auditorium of Town Hall, 30 Martin Street.
We have 10 minutes until the department head meeting, so I will call a recess if anybody wants to get a drink of water or just chat, as long as it's not board business, and we can wait the 10 minutes until we have the department heads in the room. You can turn the sound off. We're not going to discuss any board business. We're just going to take a breather, stretch my legs, and get a cup of water.
You can turn the sound off. We're not gonna discuss any board business. We're just gonna take a breather, stretch my legs, and get a cup of water.
Okay, we are back from our short recess, and it is seven o'clock, so we're gonna start the department head quarterly meeting. I'm gonna start here in the room. Uh, Carla, if you'd like to join us at the podium. And just as a reminder, if you can speak about six inches away from the microphone so that the people at home can hear you. All right, testing. We'll take it. I am Carla Christensen, library director, right downstairs in this very building. It's great to see everyone tonight. Uh, so I followed the templates. We'll start with recent achievements. We closed out, well, we finished twenty twenty-four, right? Not closed out yet. But our early sort of take on the data shows that, uh, both our print and our digital circulation stayed about the same as fiscal year twenty twenty-three, which is about what we expect. Um, our program attendance increased greatly. And our museum pass usage, uh, which are discount passes for museums, um, went up over ten percent this year, which is great. You know, we love to see a double-digit increase like that. Um, I passed six months, just, um, gosh, a couple of weeks ago. So I'm, you know, I still don't know what I don't know necessarily, but it, you know what, it feels great. And this is a, a great place to work and a great town and community to, to be in. In, we sort of ended the year with, um, closing out the school year as well. That's a big transition, of course, for families. So we had the kindergarten and second grade, all four of those classes come to the library. Um, and our children's librarian went to EES twice to be a part of large assemblies they had about the importance of reading over the summer. Um, and of course, you know, summer reading's a big deal here in Essex. Um, so that continues. Uh, I think I saw lots of you at the Essex Arts and Culture Festival, which was at the end of June, um, and that was really fun. I think we estimated about five hundred attendees overall. Um, you know, everyone came through the booths, were outside, right, ate. It was, it was really great. And I was actually excited that the library was a part of that, because, you know, we're an important part of, of the sort of culture-bearing organizations, um, in Essex. And it got great exposure, right, both here in the community and to people who came from out of town as well. Um, some of you might have been here on the day we had, um, another animal program, always the most popular things ever. Uh, so this was animals around the world, right up here, with just about fifty people, and all the animals were accounted for, so there's, there's none left. Um, over the July holiday, we did actually some shelf shifting in the library. Um, so if you've come in, we shifted around some of our new collections, you know, places where we want people to stop. Um, one decision we made this year was that we really wanted this to be about children's reading, about supporting kids as they're choosing books and reading. Um, so when you walk in, the first thing you see now are new books, um, for kids, for younger readers. So that's actually turned out great. Those shelves are always empty, which is great. It means the books are going out as fast as I can put them on the shelf. Um, and I have five teen volunteers this summer, um, who are finishing, well, starting, most of them. They're forty-hour requirement, both for the high school here as well as the technical school. Um, so it's great. It's great to have, you know, so many people interested in the library and learning really a lot of great skills that'll be transferable to lots of other parts of their life. Um, just a quick note on, um, kind of looking at the, um, year. Actually, no, this is about the quarter, interestingly. Um, over the quarter that just finished, um, we had forty-one events, which is on par with other quarters, um, but we had eight hundred and thirty-five people, um, cumulatively at those events. So that's, you know, double the participants of the first quarter of the year. You know, a lot of that is because we're kicking off summer reading and because we use the outside space. So you saw us outside with hula hoops, you know, all kinds of different things. Um, so that's really wonderful. Lots of people engaging with the library. Um, our summer reading that I mentioned a minute ago, we've got record participation this summer. We had over two hundred people, um, at the kickoff party, which is always the last day of the elementary school here. And we have a hundred and seventy-five kids and teens signed up for the library summer reading program, um, which is significant. Um, I think last year we were at about a hundred and forty kids and teens signed up. So more data on that, um, as the summer winds down. In terms of print and digital circulation, um, I talked at our last meeting about, um, sort of digital going up in the winter and print going down, just as people stay home or start to come out again. Um, so it completely follows that. Um, our print circulation is up from the first quarter. Our, our overdrive in Libby, which is most of our digital circ, is down a tiny bit from Q one. More people are coming in the door, fewer people are staying home. Yeah, and in terms of obstacles to progress, I have none to report right now. Um, expectations for the coming quarter. We started strong with a whole bunch of events, um, already in July, um, including grade-level book groups, which I have to say, working with kids as they're coming through their reading journey, you know, is one of the most important things, um, we can do. So up next, summer reading continues. The grand finale is in August. We're having a World Fair party. Um, there's a college essay writing class actually starting next week, um, for rising seniors who are finishing or possibly starting their college applications right now. Um, and then we'll have some virtual programs for adults in July and August as well. Um, we are a pick-up and drop-off spot for the Essex Silver Alert registrations. Um, that was kicked off last week at the, uh, Senior Center, and we're gonna be hosting a session as well. So that's been fun to partner. Um, we're also partnering with the Senior Center on their book, book club. We have a monthly book club. The Senior Center has a monthly book club. Um, so we've been helping them choose titles and, um, get the books. And then our adult book club takes the summer off. Ours will start again in September. And all of our weekly sort of infant toddler and preschooler programming will also start up in September. Um, kind of right after school starts. We usually wait a week or two. In terms of, um, number four is long-term goals. Um, so I talked earlier in the year about our strategic planning. That process continues. Um, we've launched community surveys, um, just at the end of last week. Any of you who are on the library, um, email list got that, and of course, it's out there on social and QR codes and the whole deal. Um, we're actually doing a special kids survey, um, starting either later this week or the beginning of next week. We really love to ask kids their opinion. It's important. It's important to listen to them. Um, so if you have kids, look for that. And the submission of the strategic plan, you know, with all of this input, with focus groups that we'll hold later this summer, um, is always in October. So whatever year's cycle you're in, it's always in October. Our, um, state statistical reporting is due in August, so that reports on the entire fiscal year. So I'm about three quarters done with that report. Um, and then our full financial reporting is due to the state in October. Um, I'm looking toward technology upgrades in twenty twenty-five. I talked about it earlier this year, but I thought it was more important that we, um, get through a full year so I can really see how everything performs over the course of, you know, things going up in the summer and then calming down a little bit. So I wanted to see that full year. Um, we're, of course, always looking at, you know, shelf and space upgrades. Um, so we're working on the teen room, the first floor conference room, a little bit right now. Um, one of my long-term goals as well is to add three hours per week to our opening hours. Um, our, uh, staff budget this year has a little bit of extra funding in it, that will, I think, bring, make it possible for that. So we're still, of course, gathering input to decide how to best use that. Um, but that's something that we're, um, looking at for this fiscal year. In terms of concerns, the only thing I would say that I've seen, um, over the last quarter or two is, is keeping staff. No one has left, uh, but people interview. Um, part of it, you know, is that they're all part-time. Um, and so they need another, you know, another job. So, uh, you know, juggling two jobs is tough, right? That stretches anyone pretty thin. Um, one of the things I'm looking at, of course, is that three hours I just mentioned. Can someone pick that up, you know, without going over their part-time status? So, um, we do have two people for whom that might be a possibility, so I need to, you know, look really hard and see how we might make that work. But it's always a concern, right? People always wanna have those two jobs to have kind of the full-time salary. That is my update for this quarter, and I will happily entertain questions.
Um, no, I just, I did wanna say, Carla, that I have, have driven by a few times when you're having the events, and it is very nice to see how many of, of, you know, who participate.
Thank you. I was, I was worried you were gonna say mayhem, but no, it's, um, it's great, right? We all are used to the parking situation here, so, right, you make it work. All right, thanks. Great to see everybody.
Brooke? Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay. Um, so, as you know, this time of year is complicated. We're sort of working in two different fiscal years. Not only are we reconciling bank accounts and GL accounts and that type of thing from FY twenty-four, but we're also, nothing stops. So on July first, the tax bills went out and people started paying, thankfully. Um, so we're sort of juggling that back and forth right now. Like I mentioned, the Q one preliminary bills went out, um, very successfully. We worked with the assessor's office and Vadar to bring all the data over on the data bridge and then calculate, um, the preliminary or estimated taxes for Q one and Q two. Um, those payments are starting, are coming in steadily, and as usual, we're waiting for the large wire from the mortgage companies that will come in probably end of this week, maybe last minute, beginning of next week. Um, all of the bank accounts for, um, FY twenty-four have been reconciled as of June thirtieth, so that is done. And now we're focusing on year-end reporting. And I'm super excited that Michaela's on board to work with her through all of that, um, all of the year-end process. Let's see. Other things that are upcoming are I'm going back to the Mass Treasure and Collector School in a couple of weeks. I'm gonna be taking my third year of collector classes. Unfortunately, I can't take the exam yet because I'm two weeks shy of holding the job of, for three years as of September first. So I will sit for the collector's exam next summer, hopefully become certified as a collector. And then two years after that, I can take the treasurer's exam and hopefully become certified as a treasurer as well. So that's all in the works. Also, in a few months, I think the auditors are coming, so that's always interesting and a great time for all. And really, right now, the main thing that I'm focusing on, like I said, is all the year-end reporting and keeping up
The auditor's coming, is this a yearly thing?
Yes. Yes, I believe it's September.
Yeah, since we have enterprise funds, any community with enterprise fund has to do an annual audit, so we've been doing that for many years.
That's, I thought so, but I just wanted to make sure.
What is the cutoff for paying FY24 bills?
Taxes?
Yeah.
So, I mean, there are some people who have not yet paid, and interest is accruing and fees are accruing.
It's accruing, yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, you can pay late, but it costs you more.
Yeah.
And eventually goes into more complicated processes. But we are still getting some FY20, most people have paid, there's just a few lingering situations. But steadily, like, we made a big bank deposit today, so the people are steadily already paying the FY25 bills.
Thank you, Brooke. I have no questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief Francis?
Good evening, all. Can you hear me?
We can.
So this is more about current events than recent achievements. I'm happy to say that next Monday at 10:00 a.m., Megan Watson will graduate the Full-Time Academy, and she will take a week's vacation, well-deserved. I've been to an academy, so I understand. And she will start her full-time career with us, contractual full-time career, the week of August 4th. And I'm happy to say she's going to be our first full-time female police officer. As you all know, for several years now, we've worked collaboratively with all the Cape Ban Police Departments plus Ipswich and Beverly, along with assigned clinicians from Beth Israel Leahy Behavioral Health to provide mental health assistance when needed. When I spoke of this at our April Managers Meeting, I had mentioned that we had a clinician depart. However, we've since filled that position, but being the way the, everything is today, we also had Lisa Macario, our longtime clinician, left the program. However, she's now working full-time in the Beverly Police Department Community Impact Unit, so we still have access to her, we can still call her. Lisa's been instrumental in this whole program as far as mental health responses and what have you. So she's just one phone call away. Excuse me. We figured filling Lisa's shoes was going to be very difficult, and it was difficult for a while. We had several interviews with potential clinicians. However, we were able to offer the position to a very qualified clinician. Her name's Joanna Celia, and she starts in, at the end of August, and we'll be onboarding her then. Also of note, in her position as the Director of Northeast Essex County Crisis Intervention Team Training and Technical Assistance Center, Lisa has been asked to invite two offices from her assigned catchment, which I believe is the six departments that work together. And she requested Sergeant Bruce be one of those attending offices. And he will be going to a crisis intervention summit, which is only one day, in October. As I'd mentioned in our last Managers Meeting on Saturday, April 13th, members of the Essex and Manchester Public Safety and North Shore Regional 911 Center had participated in a joint training event at the Manchester Essex Regional High School. The Regional Active Shooter Hostile Event Response Training was the first of an ongoing training commitment to the towns and the Manchester Essex Regional School District, as well as the Cape Ban area. The regional training will continue with MPTC-required AAIR training, which is Active Attack Integrated Response First Responder Training. We had scheduled our officers for this mandatory training. Sergeant Davis had scheduled two at a time, and they were going to have to go to Oxbridge, which is two and a half to three hours of travel time. Myself, Sergeant, excuse me, Chief Fitzgerald from Manchester and Chief Horvath from Rockport got together, we had a meeting, and along with Chief Connolly from Gloucester, who couldn't attend that meeting, we're going to be doing that training regionally around here. So we may be using our building, we may be using something in Manchester, something in Rockport, but we're going to be able to train our officers here for that two-day training without sending them all the way to Oxbridge. So that's going to save us a lot of travel time and just logistics. As you know, on June 5th, we participated in a tabletop exercise at Manchester focused on a Category 3 hurricane preparedness, response, and recovery involving stakeholders from all the greater Cape Ban communities. I believe it was very informative training, and because of that event, the Cape Ban Emergency Planning Team has now re, has started up again to meet quarterly, thanks in large part to Gloucester Fire Chief Eric Smith. So now all the emergency personnel will be meeting every three months to discuss stuff like that. Obstacles to current goals and objectives. Unfortunately, staffing numbers continue to be our biggest obstacle to reaching our goals and objectives. I realize this is something that I've spoken about a number of times, but the truth of the matter is, the problem isn't going away. Some of the issues with the officers having to work more and more overtime are, we have offices that are in need of the 40-hour CIT, that's the Crisis Intervention Team training, and we've had to put that off on a number of occasions as offices are needed to fill existing shifts. We have two detectives that need to attend a two-week-long detective training, which we've scheduled, and then we had to cancel to fill existing shifts, excuse me. A few of the officers have been expressing concerns about the amount of overtime they're having to work. The MPTC changes have added mandatory training, such as the ASHA tabletop, additional firearms training, and et cetera, excuse me. Officers having to work more overtime are not available to fill details that are needed to be filled. For example, and I understand details are, you know, it's extra work, if you will, but for an example, is the Mass DOT project that's going on right now. Few weeks ago, they had asked for two detail offices on one of the days, detail offices on one of the days for the work on Eastern Avenue. Unfortunately, none of the offices here had taken it, so we put it out to numerous outside agencies, including Mass Environmental Police, Mass State Police, and the Sheriff's Department. And unfortunately, no one took it that day. We were fortunate in the respect that the contractor for Mass DOT was able to move it to another day, so to speak. We're not always going to have that option, so these are some of the things we're dealing with. And as far as grants go, grants are a good thing, as we all know, but unfortunately, with the staffing situation we have right now, it's very difficult to take, say, a NHTSA traffic grant when we have to fill shifts first. So that is a problem, but we'll continue to work on it. Expectations for the coming quarter. Sunday, September 8th, as you know, the Essex Police Department Car Show is scheduled to take place from 1:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. For the past few months, we've been having meetings with local volunteers and enthusiasts, as well as our longtime sponsor, Heidi Jackson-Dean from Brookline Bank, and it's looking like it's going to be a pretty successful car show. This fall, we continue to have regular meetings with the Manchester Essex Regional School District staff, as well as Essex and Manchester Public Safety, and continue to focus on more in-depth school response training. We'll be stepping up what we've been doing, and depending on what it is, a lot of times it may be when there's no kids in the school. We are up for accreditation reassessment this fall. Our last assessment was approximately three years ago, and Sergeant Bruce has our Mark Assessment scheduled for August 7th. The Mark Assessment will take place, take about a day for the Mark Assessment, and then the actual assessment will be in October 16th through 18th, and that will take anywhere from two to three days. Having the Mark in August and then having the actual in October gives us time to make any, they call them repairs. If they come and they see something that's not in compliance, a standard that needs to be changed or what have you, that gives us enough time to do the repairs before the actual assessment. Long-term goals, continue to work on recruitment and retention of police officers, continue to work with the school administrators, as well as various departments and agencies to ensure the safety of the children in our schools. This should include a uniform reunification program, as well as organized standard operating procedures, soup to nuts. Training exercises from the report of a hostile intruder to response and debrief, washout, as it's called, after the exercise. As far as grants, at this point, the only potential grant we have on the table is the $3,000 reimbursement grant for the Bridge Academy expenses, which I don't think we're going to have a problem getting. We still have not heard back from them. And that's it. Any questions?
Well, the, I think you referred to it as the Emergency Management Planning Team that was reinvigorated as a result of their hurricane tabletop. Does that include just the Cape Ban communities, or does it also include Ipswich and Beverly?
It includes Ipswich. I don't believe it includes Essex.
Beverly.
I mean, Beverly, sorry. It's just the Greater Cape Ban, I believe.
Even when that was running prior to COVID.
Yeah.
It did, it never included Beverly. Ipswich came in later in the game, and now they're back in it.
I think you might be confusing it because we're involved with Beverly in the mental health stuff.
Yeah, I'm wondering if there's value to having a bigger city involved, because they're going to be dealing with, you know, some bigger issues.
Yeah, the, the...
Or would it just confuse the...
Well, as far as the training goes, though, it would be a matter of now you'd need a bigger facility and, and you, like, what we have to do, because it's two days training, and every department obviously needs to be covering shifts as well.
No, no, I mean the, the planning team.
Oh.
To have Beverly involved.
You know, that's something I can bring up, I'm not sure.
Things you might not see, you know, in the other communities. I don't know, just food for thought.
Something to think about.
I have no questions. Paul, in your lovely world, what would you say the number of offices, and I'm going to say by summer versus winter, would be?
It doesn't really fluctuate from summer and winter, it just fluctuates throughout the year. You might have someone leave. Right now, we're at 12, total.
How many, and how many do you think?
I could use 12 full-time.
12 full-time.
But that includes three reserves, that includes me. And I get it, it's, you know, funding is always an issue.
Yeah.
I understand that.
Thank you.
Anything else? Good.
Do you want to, Paul, do you want to just tell the entire board about what a great thing Sud Base did for, did everybody get copied on that email about the vehicle and the motor? No. It looks like the facial expression's saying no. So do you want to tell the entire board about saving money? Because that was wonderful.
I apologize. I'll send it to the whole, that stuff to the whole board if you want it. I usually send it to Ruth and Brendan and figure, I just figured it gets...
No, no, that's fine, but it's something wonderful to talk about that.
We actually had one of our, actually, one of the newer Durangos. When we bought two Durangos at the same time back in 2021, those are the newest Cruises that we have right now. One of them, I came in one morning, and I had two of my offices with the hood up in the air, and they were looking at the car, and I was like, oh, this can't be good. So I walked over and I heard, a real knocking sound. My first thought was lifters. I'm no mechanic, but, so to make a long story short, we brought it to Ernie's. Ernie said to bring it to Sud Base. Sud Base took a look at it, and at first, they said that they thought it was going to be, need lifters and rockers, but they were going to cover it for us as an extended warranty. And we, going further down the road, they thought it might need an engine, but, long story short, we ended up getting it repaired. They did basically an engine rebuilt and didn't cost us a dime. They covered it for us. And I talked to the manager down there, he said this, obviously, if it had 100,000 miles, it'd be different, but since it had like 60,000 miles, he said, listen, emergency vehicles are very important to us, and that's why we took care of it. And I was very appreciative, obviously, so.
Did it come from there?
No, but where it's a Dodge product, they, they work on it. We got it from, geez, where did we get that?
I think you got it out of Norwood or something.
Yeah.
It was down that way.
Yeah. Actually, those were, those two we got from MHQ, that's right.
Okay.
Because they actually had, we were very fortunate, because at that time, they weren't making them anymore until the spring, I guess. They actually had two black ones right on the property, so we kind of lucked out there.
Thank you. I just wanted to give a positive spin on...
Very nice.
Thank you, Chief Francis. Bob?
My name is Bob Teal. I live down on Water Street. Susan and I live on Water Street. We've been there for, I think it's 50, 50 years this November. I'm going to tell you a little bit about myself, because I know a couple of you, Brendan and Pam. I don't know the other, and I know who you are, I just haven't met you before. So I think it's important that we just, I tell you a little bit about myself. I've been, I was in education for 45 years, public education as a teacher, a curriculum director, program curriculum director, and a school principal. I can't believe that I retired back in 19, 2005, but I've been involved, serving in interim positions and also serving on different boards. This is, the Essex representative to the tech school, agricultural and tech school, is relatively new for me. I just started last, late in the fall last year, and I did not do this presentation. I'm not sure anybody did, because we were kind of in limbo in between, in between folks. But I'd like to give you some facts and then share a little bit of my feelings about education and where we're going. Essex Agricultural and Technical High School, I think it's one of the top technical high schools, agricultural and technical high schools in the state of Massachusetts. Its facilities, including all the buildings and the land, are by far the furthest-reaching. There's a wide range of programs, and I'll get into that. Excellent faculty and staff, including many professionals in their specific areas. Full range, the standard high school curriculum is part of the programming, in addition to, including special education. All students must fulfill the core, and meet the core academic standards. Many, many programs, including above and beyond the academics, manufacturing, health, logistics, information technology, early education and childcare, electrical, plumbing, metal fabrication, food service and restaurant management, animal science, horticulture, et cetera. Also, auto mechanics is another area. It's just interesting, and it just kind of reflects what's going on with the other programs, but the car dealerships, the big dealerships are just in touch with the school all the time, trying to get kids to come in when they graduate and work out in the, you know, in the service department. 2024, '25 enrollment right now is just over 1,200. Incoming classes, 300, and there were 500 applicants for those 300 positions. I'm talking about all the towns and the cities. Essex is right around 15 students, could be a little less, might be a couple more by the time we're done. The big cities are the bigger contributors to the school are Peabody, Danvers, Beverly, Salem, and Gloucester, ranging from anywhere from 100 to 400 students. The smaller towns, including Essex, Manchester, Hamilton, Wenham, Bauxford, Nahant, range from in the mid-teens to the mid-20s. There's a wide discrepancy. Personally, based on my experience in education, I think we're going, we're already going through a major change in traditional high school education and the type of education that's presented by Essex Technical and Agricultural School. It's a great place. If you have, how many of you have been to the school? So you know it's a great place, and it's growing all the time. It's growing facilities, students, staff, programs. It's, Dr. Ritchie-O is doing a great job, and she has a wonderful staff and a good team of people there. team of people there. Just, I met with Heidi a couple of weeks ago. We sat for about an hour and just talked, which was very helpful to me. We have students that are graduating, moving into the workforce immediately, not going to higher education. Some of them making 50, 60, even 80,000 dollars a year. I just, I mean, these kids are 18 years old. But a lot of them are going on to further their education. And, let me just catch up with myself here. Those, and Heidi said to me, there was, unbelievable, a couple of kids this year graduating with offers over 100,000 dollars a year. So, I mean, it's, it's just wonderful. And it's, and my brother just, this ties in, by the way. My brother just retired from Mass, Main Maritime Academy, which is no longer just a ship-out school. And that's the type of school that a lot of these kids will go on to. Remember Wentworth, Wentworth Institute, was it, in Boston? Schools like this, but they were coming out of traditional high schools, and a lot of this stuff was new to them. These kids are way ahead of that, and it's a fantastic place. So we feed those schools, and they love, they love our students. As far as open houses and tours, you've done, most of you, all of you have done that. The school has a calendar of tours during the school year where they can, where people can come in, parents can come in, kids can come in and see what, see what the school has to offer for them. I think I, I've said enough, but I would love to answer some questions if you have any. And I'll do my best, based on my limited experience so far.
What, what degrees are kids that are going on to higher education for, what typically are they going into? Is it like, is it health? What are they going after when they go, when they leave Essex Tech and go on to higher education?
Did I mention the, maybe I didn't mention some of the programs. I did. Well, it's really reflected by the majors that are being offered, but, you know, in the...
There's no typical, no typical direction?
No what?
Typical direction that they're going in, like health or, you know, finance or something like that?
Yeah, sure. Health, manufacturing.
Yeah.
Logisticals.
And when you say you're talking higher education, so you're saying going on for a degree?
Yeah, another degree, yeah. A college degree.
Yes. And even go on to further their education in the specific areas that they're, you know, coming out of.
Yeah. So it's everything, yeah.
Anything else?
I have no questions. Alva?
Great school. It's a great school.
Yeah, no, I have no questions right now.
Thank you for joining us tonight, Bob.
Okay, thank you.
So I have a report from the DPW that they shared with me via email. I'll just give you a quick update. Obviously, there's no one here to answer questions. But for water, they say that the water plant upgrades are continuing. Both sedimentation basins are back online, and the raw water flows have been raised to summer flow rates. There was a time when we were down to half the plant being able to be used, so keeping up with the demand was hard. The well rebid has come in too high again, so we will rebid for a third time and see, with a scaled-back scope of work. Under sewer, they say that the grinder pump replacement has stopped until the fall due to lack of funding. Meeting with Gloucester regarding sewer treatment plant work that is slated to happen in the near future, Essex will be responsible for a portion of the project. Cemetery, the new online cemetery record program is up and running. It will help the office and the highway staff locate grave locations quicker and will allow others to search the records. Transfer station, the long wait for the recycling compactors to be operational is over. The equipment went into operation on July 12th, and everything is going well. There'll be some rearranging and some traffic flow issues addressed. We are confident that all the issues, issues will be worked out. In highway, there is a full-time labor position open, but for right now, we are able to utilize our summer part-time staff to fill in some gaps. Within the next month, we will post the job again and see if we get any good candidates. Now that the mowing has slowed down due to lack of rain, the highway department will be able to address other projects that need to be done, such as sidewalks and catch basins. That is the entire report. So I'm going to turn over to online and call on any of the department heads. Lisa, do you want to go next? It may not be Lisa. So Erin, do you want to go? And then you can introduce Michaela. Nope, it is Lisa. Erin, sorry, you need to wait your turn. Lisa, you're up.
Okay, sorry. I just, I have three screens, and my mouse wasn't on the right screen, and I wasn't coming over. So recent achievements at the planning board. At annual town meeting, we passed seven articles updating the bylaw, including some that were housekeeping and several that were new. So we added four different articles, added more language and provisions for special permit categories. So that was a fairly significant step. After town meeting, we got to work on, starting to work on proposing residential districts. So we have been working on that. We put a tax bill insert that everyone should have seen that talks about our whole project for, we have a survey up there now. We have FAQs for people to review, and we have a schedule, we have workshops scheduled every week for July and August, and we will probably continue that into September. Our main obstacle right now is getting people to pay attention, take the survey, and understand what is coming in the fall to be proposed for residential districts, and giving feedback and input. So that, that's the biggest hurdle we face right now. The other bright note for us is that we were recently able to purchase a plotter, which gives us the ability to print full-size maps at 36 inches wide and 44 inches high, which is what the size and scale that you need to really be able to look at properties in Essex. So we just got that up and running last week, so I was able to have full-size maps in color at our, at our workshop last week. In the coming quarter, the residential zoning district effort will continue, and we will probably have our initial public hearing on what we'll be bringing to town meeting on September 25th. And I will be trying to get the word out about that, in addition to the workshops and the survey and things like that. We really just need people's input. Our long-term goals are to hopefully, to get that in place, at least a version of residential districts that the majority of people can support at Fall Town Meeting. And the moratorium on conversion of residential and open space to commercial or industrial expires on the 1st of January, and it's unlikely that we would get an additional extension if we were to put that on the warrant, but, so we probably won't. And beyond that, we'll continue to work on other improvements to the bylaw over the next probably several years, because there's still a certain amount of work to do with a bunch of different categories from non-conforming uses and, there's more. I forget right now, I'm so wrapped up in residential districts right now. Again, the concerns are really just public engagement and making sure people are paying attention and trying to find ways to engage people and let them learn about what we're proposing. And we have no grants. We ran out of the last one, and that's all done. That's it.
Thank you, Lisa. Does the board have questions?
Lisa, just quickly, do you have an idea of how many have taken the survey?
We were up to 186 last week, and we've been pushing more, and we're asking people to reach out to their friends and neighbors. And so we also, at our last planning board meeting, we decided to keep the survey open at least until August 7th, which is our next scheduled regular planning board meeting, although we have three more workshops between now and then, so. We'll continue to push the survey. Because the survey is very specifically about what people do or do not want in their neighborhood. So it asks for your address, and then it asks about what you do and do not want in your neighborhood. And we're going to use that, because we need feedback from the public. We're not going to make this stuff up on our own. I mean, we can, but that's not responsive to what people in town want. So we want to get as much feedback on the survey so that when we do propose something, it does accurately reflect the concerns and wishes of the people who would be in any proposed residential district.
Thank you so much, Lisa. Erin, would you like to unmute and give your presentation?
Sure. So I just have a couple of things. We, we've been pretty busy this summer. We hired a new public health, public health nurse, Elsa Wright, about six weeks ago. We're absolutely thrilled to have her on board. She's not a traditional public health nurse, but she has a lot of nursing experience, and she's excited to learn about public health nursing and, and getting more involved in the community. Her first activity will be starting up the blood pressure clinics and other programming at the senior center, which died out during COVID and then never really got started back up again. So Elsa's goals, I think, include meeting, you know, getting to know our community partners, identifying the public health issues in the community, and then collaborating with those community partners to, to figure out how to address the concerns. We're, I'm super excited to have her on board, and I hope she's, I hope she's just as happy to be working with us, because I want her to stay. We applied for the Department of Industrial Accidents 2025 Safety Grant. If we're approved, we would be the lead community. Manchester would be a partner. They would sign on, and we would have or hold, host various trainings to address needs that were identified by the DPW and by our own review of safety programs and, and trainings, including the OSHA 10 and 30-hour courses, defensive driving, traffic control, trench and excavation safety, and this is all for DPWs in Manchester and Essex, and then workplace violence de-escalation, and CPR, AED certification for all town employees. Our total request is just under 25,000. The maximum request is 25, and I think we were like 24.9 or 24.8. So if we get everything, we'll be able to do all of those, and there's no expectation that we chip in any, you know, we're not financially responsible to host these training sessions. I would say if we do have all-day sessions, we'd probably use some of our OSHA general expense line for refreshments, but otherwise, the trainings will all be covered. And I think that's it. So if it's okay, I would like to yield any time that I have left to let Michaela Sullivan talk a little bit about her summer internship. Michaela is a graduate public health student, and she's working in Essex for the summer. And I would like to let her talk a little bit about what she's been doing and what her project will look like in Essex moving forward.
Great. Thank you, Erin. So does the board have any questions for Erin before we let Erin go? Okay. Michaela, if you want to unmute yourself, we'd be happy to hear the presentation.
Sure, of course. Hi, everyone. So again, my name is Michaela Sullivan, and I'm interning with Erin here at the Essex Board of Health this summer. I'm a part-time grad student at BU, and also I work at Dana-Farber on clinical trials for patients with multiple myeloma. So Erin and I are working on a Silver Alert program, which is aimed at assisting cognitively impaired individuals. We're collaborating with the public health nurse, social worker, public safety, and the Council on Aging to implement this program. I was drawn to help with this initiative when I was applying to internships because of my personal experience. In 2014, my grandfather was showing early signs of cognitive decline, but he was still able to drive. So one Saturday, he went off to run, you know, his typical errands, and he didn't return home. So my family alerted emergency personnel, and they issued a Silver Alert to notify the public that he was missing. And then luckily, he was found almost three days later. Because of the Silver Alert, someone had found him in a parking lot, in a Walgreens parking lot, many miles from his house. It was cold. It was December, and it was, it was really scary for him. He was sleeping. And so they found him, alerted the people in the store, and then they alerted the emergency personnel, who were able to figure out it was him that they were looking for, and they brought him back to safety. So he was found safe. He was able to spend Christmas with my family, and I was really truly inspired by everybody who helped find him and brought him home safely to us. So our goal with the Silver Alert program here in Essex is to kind of be proactive and reduce search times if people wander off. If someone is a caregiver of someone who's at risk of wandering and decides to participate in the program, we ask that they please fill out a registration form that's available at the senior center or library. And then caregivers can drop off this form, along with a picture of the registrant, in one of our secure drop boxes. And then this data will be sent back to regional dispatch, and then it will only be available to emergency personnel to aid in quick response if someone does go missing. So we're currently working on advertising this program to residents, and we're connecting with regional dispatch to determine the best way to store and collect this information. And then we're also hoping to potentially extend this program to children with cognitive impairments in the future. So if you have any questions, please let Erin or I know.
Does the board have questions? Thank you, Michaela. That was very well done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And, let's see, I think that's everybody.
Tina, is this Sussar?
Oh, Tina. Do you want to speak from the assessing department? Tina may not be there. Sometimes she just logs on to record. Tina, if you're there and you would like to speak, unmute. Okay. Tina may not be there. Tina, if you are there and you want to speak, we'll certainly allow that. But at this time, I will entertain any public comment. If anybody has public comment, feel free to unmute yourself, and you may speak now. Hearing no public comment online, does the board have any other questions, comments, concerns? No? Alva?
It did, but I forgot it.
Okay. I will entertain a motion to adjourn at 7:50 p.m.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Joan.